... until after seven o'clock, but anybody that wants to come ahead if you want to sign up. But anybody that wants to sign up needs to do so before we call the roll or bang the gavel to call the roll. Is anybody coming?
He's not coming.
Okay, let me go ahead, Ms. Whitby, and then call the roll.
Yes, sir.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
The quorum is present, sir.
Let me ask that we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman White.
White.
And then followed by the pledge by Alderwoman Ross.
Father, we thank you for the freedom we have to meet in this place, Lord, and discuss these things. Father, we know nothing is too big or too small for you. Father, we pray a special blessing on those in North Little Rock who are serving in the military. Father, again, we thank you for this time to be together, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Praise the Lord. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second. Motion made and seconded that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved is submitted on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number two?
Would you please read number one by title?
Oh, I'm sorry, I pulled the wrong step. Number one, this is a memorandum from your office regarding an application for a new retail beer off premises permit for Broadway, Donuts, and More at 4,008 East Broadway by Ismail Ibis.
Okay, is there a motion?
I have a question.
Let's get a motion to accept and file, and then we'll have a question.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a someone that has requested to make a comment on that, but Alderman Height, before we recognize Mr. Banks, we'll listen for your question.
Oh, you know, everybody probably thinks I'm a little weird anyway, but I've been sitting in the Arrow City Council for the last eight years and almost two months. This is the first time that I can recall, excuse me, this is the first time I can recall that a donut shop has applied for a retail beer permit. I just, is the applicant here?
The applicant, I don't know if that applicant is here. If they are, would they please identify yourself? Doesn't appear that they're here, but we do have someone that wants to speak on that. Go ahead and make the question.
I was just curious as to why a donut shop would need to be, would need to apply for a retail beer permit. I'm just curious. Do you know anything about it, Alderman, Alderwoman Robinson, since it's in your ward?
Well, I've visited that donut shop, and they sell more than donuts. It's like a little convenience store is what it is. They sell a little bit of everything, you know, plus the donuts.
Okay, I mean, I'm not opposed to them having a permit. I was just, it just kind of struck me a little bit different that a donut shop was the one that was applying for a...
Well, I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Let me go ahead then, and as we're on this, Mr. Emmanuel Banks, B-A-N-K-S, is that correct? If you want to come and feel free to comment on this communication.
Yes, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for giving me this opportunity to come and speak on behalf of this request for a beer off premises permit. Again, as was stated, my name is Emmanuel Banks, and I'm a resident here in North Little Rock, been here since 1990. And my wife and I own and operate a daycare center at 4,000 East Broadway. And our daycare is located basically on the same property, if you will, or right adjacent, the adjacent property to this Donuts and More. And I understand the economic times that we're in here, and I can understand a business owner wanting to expand his business to offer opportunities to the community. However, Donuts and More has been located on that property for not quite a year, whereas our property, which is located next door, which we own as well, we are the owners of the property, we've been there for six years running this daycare, and we've got, we've got about 40 kids that are located at our property there adjacent to Donuts and More. And then we've got another property down the street, and between the two properties, we've got 100 kids, and we have parents and workers that interact between both facilities. And our concern is not just the kids, but the parents and the workers. We've had a recent occurrence here not long ago where we've had some loitering in the area where a gentleman was on the property drinking beer with, in his hand, and my wife had to run him off the property. And we're just afraid that if this business is able to operate and sell beer, that it's going to create and cause traffic in our area there along the daycare property that is just unwarranted, if you will. And it's just, it's just not an area conducive for operating a beer facility. And not only that, but, you know, then we'll have to contend with beer bottles and beer cans and just things and environment that's not good for children, and we would hate to, for the city to be in support of this. And so, on behalf of All For Kids Child Development Center, and my wife and I, we wanted to express our disapproval for this. I've talked to the North Little Rock Police Chief Bradley, and I expressed my concerns to him as well, and he was right in line with us, and he didn't know that it was right next door to the daycare, so he agreed that we probably didn't need to approve that as well. And I've also talked to the city council member Linda Robertson as well. So, again, I appreciate y'all's time, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. And again, I would just recommend that the city not vote in favor of this request. Thank you.
Let me, you have a question?
I just want, can I ask the gentleman a question? You said you're at 4,000?
We're at 4,000 East Broadway.
Okay, are there, okay, and this is a convenience store that's applying for the...
The facility, it used to be Auto Land Car Dealership, and it basically, it's just a framed building, looked more like a house, but it's an office building, and inside the building, they, he opened up the business as Donuts and More, and I've never been inside the facility, so I'm not sure what all he sells, other than just by what the name says.
Well, is this, is this an establishment where they allow the consumption of beer on the property, or is it just a retail outlet?
Well, the request here is that they're wanting to service like a retail outlet where people would come in and buy beer, and I assume they would walk off the premises. However, you all know how sometimes certain areas, we've got an alley between the two properties, we've just got convenient places, we're backing up to Washington Avenue where it's, to some degree, it doesn't even have a lot of lighting there, and we've actually lit our property up by adding more lights to our property to kind of give a little bit more visibility to the area, but we're just afraid that it's going to attract a crowd and an environment that's going to have loitering, have beer bottles, have beer cans, and people don't, when they're drinking beer, they don't, you know, follow rules and say throw it in the trash can. They're going to, you know, operate however they feel comfortable with.
Okay, so it's a retail outlet, then, that, under the rules, ABC, they're not allowed consumption on properties, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? If it's just a retail outlet?
I think that's what they're applying for off premises, they're not applying for an on premises permit.
Okay, and the other question is, in that 4,000 block of East Broadway, are there any other establishments that allow the sale of alcoholic beverages of any type?
The only, the only people that may, that may offer beer is shotgun dimes, they may serve beer inside there, that may be an on premises facility, that may be it.
Okay, thank you.
Which is in a, you know, perimeter of the facility.
Let me sort of make sure everybody knows what the city council's role is in this, and that is that we really don't have a role as such. Now, obviously, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission has its own state rules and regulations. We have, in the past, been known to oppose something, and we'll certainly take an opportunity for us to do that in the past, and the ABC has granted over our opposition. So, you know, I would encourage you very much to do the same thing that you're doing here in front of the ABC Board. And, you know, with that, let me suggest, Alderwoman Robinson, if you are opposed, that we have a motion now to accept and file. You know, I might think that we might want to do that, accept and file, like we've done in the past, and amend that to say accept and file and oppose, and ask the, you know, ask the mayor to communicate that opposition by the council via voice vote to the ABC Board, and that, you know, Ms. Whitby, if we could ask that, you know, that you work perhaps with Ms. Robinson, as well as, you know, our Mr. Banks here, and perhaps help us draft a letter that, you know, assuming that we make that decision, that we can communicate in the best way possible, the ABC. With that, Ms. Robinson, do I hear a motion to...
Yes, I move.
Second. It's moved and seconded that the motion to accept and file be amended to oppose, accept, file, oppose, and communicate that opposition to the ABC Board by instructing the mayor to convey a sense of the council. That's moved and seconded to amend, is there any further discussion on that motion to amend? Ms. Whitby, on the motion to amend for a voice vote to do this?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And now, a vote to adopt is amended.
The 15-day comment period, though, is expired, if I'm correct.
I've sent these over to ABC before, you know, when we've had these voice votes before, I've called them, and yes, they have a 15-day comment period that they hold open, but just like us, they try to be accepting, they try to be understanding of timeframes and when things get voted on, and they'll certainly still consider it.
That's the best we can do.
So, we can still get a letter to them, and they'll consider it.
All right, we just took a vote, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll convey that opposition, you know, Mr. Banks, and we encourage you, as well as others, to let the ABC Board know themselves how we feel, and I know that Chief Bradley's down here, and to the extent that that communication can be supported, that this council has indicated we'd like to do that. All right, would you read by title, and let me go ahead, unless Alderwoman Ross wants any different, just, I think it's a two-page letter, so if you'll just read it by title, and I'll explain it.
Yes, sir, it's a letter from Mary Ann Hodge, President of Main Street Argenta. It's regarding a reorganization of Main Street Argenta and a possible name change.
Can I get a motion to accept and file, and then I'll go ahead and explain if you want it read after that explanation, will certainly be anyone willing to do so.
I'll move.
Second. All right, moved, accept and file. We are the largest city, I think perhaps still are, that joined the Main Street, the Arkansas Main Street program. Over the last, you know, we'll say three or four years, several groups, and we've always had groups that have been active in supporting downtown, the Argentus CDC, the Downtown Boosters, and of recent time span, the, the Argentum Downtown Council, I believe, the ABC, Argentum Business Council, I'm trying to think of the exact...
Downtown Council.
Downtown Council, Argentum Downtown Council.
ADC.
A B...
ADC.
ADC, has become very active, and I think we've seen the several security people that are here, the variety of things that have taken place, and they've stepped forward. The city's partnered with them, no doubt, you know, in assisting with some of the improvements that have been made, and look forward to continuing with that assistance, but they've taken a step to, you know, be a, what I would consider to be an equal partner, and more and more, that activity has reduced a lot of what Main Street has done in other communities, as well as fundraising. That's a big part of the Main Street requirement under the state, you know, being involved in the state and Main Street program. And obviously, as the Downtown Council has increased and enhanced its activities, you know, funds are limited, and so Main Street's ability to raise funds has been affected. Now, Main Street, as the letter indicates, has undertaken several things that are of some significance, you know, one, the art walk, and the other, doing the legal work in terms of the Smart House Way property. There are certain legal requirements that prevent the dissolution of Main Street with regard to some of those obligations, as I have consulted with the city attorney's office. However, the overall mission of Main Street has been somewhat reduced. Now, of recent vintage, you know, I've asked Michael Drake to, because of some of the availability of time, to undertake being very active in dealing with a lot of the stimulus package that we've been, and I'll make a report on that in just a minute, but a lot of the stimulus package that was adopted about eight or nine days ago by the Congress, and to help us in trying to step up to the plate. We've got a pretty fair team that we've put together, but that's, you know, more details of that description will come here in just perhaps a little bit, if not this council meeting, certainly the first council meeting, the next council meeting. But Michael has undertaken to become a real assistant in funneling different projects and learning about the opportunities, so he's, his duties have shifted a bit, and perhaps we'll get a chance, you know, to deal with that, in fact, not get a chance, it's my intent to bring a recommendation to the council, if not the next council meeting, the one after that. And so, you know, because of the requirements of the Main Street Arkansas program, both with fundraising and certainly a broad range of responsibilities, I had an opportunity to visit with Mary Ann Hodge, who's the author of this letter, and the chairman of the Main Street Board, last week, and the letter somewhat speaks for itself in indicating that, you know, the significant mission of Main Street has been, in some respects, fulfilled, in some respects, assisted by the active and certainly successful efforts of the Argentum Downtown Council. And so, Main Street is, and this decision needs to be, you know, made, and I think the board, it appears through the letter, has already made it, that we need to voluntarily disassociate ourselves, and as such, there'll necessarily be a name change with a nonprofit that is now, you know, Main Street Argentum. Because of no longer being a member of that, then there will need to be some name change, and that's being considered by the board itself. So, there's a need for the continuation of the corporate entity. At the same time, the functions have somewhat been taken over by the Downtown Council, and I think that's the background on the letter. So, if there's any questions, you know, I'll certainly be happy to address them. It would be my intent to come back to the council, like I said, the next meeting or two, and make a recommendation with regard to Main Street, and I know there's a budget that's currently there, and to recommend how we perhaps ought to best deal with that in the very near future. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I don't think Mary Ann's here, don't see her, so I'll be happy to add to or certainly read the letter. If there's no other questions or comments, you know, I guess the remainder of the letter speaks for itself, and that's just indicating to the council and to the community that, you know, that Main Street Argentum will communicate to the Main Street Arkansas and withdraw from membership in that organization. And with that, I certainly thank this council, you know, as a significant thanks to that entity, to the work that Michael's done, and certainly the board members, and I know they're going to continue in some capacities, but certainly not at the level and under the same charge that has been there up until this point. With that, on the motion to accept and file?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I know that the next thing on the agenda is the sharing, and certainly our appreciation with the North Little Rock Surtooma Club. One thing that we might do, and maybe, I know there are some people here that are interested in our screening ordinance, if I could, how many, if you just show me by hands, how many here are interested in the screening ordinance? Let me go ahead, and I know a number of people signed up, because I know a number of people here are for the Surtooma, and this may short circuit a little bit of the screening ordinance, and let me just explain it this way. You know, we don't have anything on the council's agenda except a resolution that I asked the city attorney to prepare. That resolution was what I indicated to the council at the last meeting, indicating that because there were a number of people, and I know it was fairly broadly reported, there were a number of people who are obligated, under the terms of that legislation, to screen their dumpsters. And I know that there are a vast majority of the people out there who have not complied with the law, for whatever reason, and those numbers, you know, certainly speak some volumes. So, what I indicated at the last council meeting was that I did not intend to, absent the council giving me direction otherwise, which I was, I'm seeking in the term of this legislation, to indicate that we don't intend to enforce the provisions of that dumpster ordinance until July 1st of this year. Now, this is just the first step in what I think will give the council, if it's adopted, the opportunity to take a look at the impact that this ordinance is having. You know, I'm told again by our code enforcement officers that roughly one out of five, if I remember right, is that a, you know, ballpark guesstimate, have complied. So, you know, totally undoing, you know, the legislation while the council could, you know, may very well not be the most beneficial option because of those that have complied. And there are certain, perhaps, legal things the city attorney's office has informed me that, you know, would be an argument against doing away with the legislation. However, you know, I think that if this is adopted, then we're going to take a look at, I know a recommendation that I indicated to the council that I was prepared to make, and that was essentially, take a look at loosening up the requirements that code has in terms of substantially complying rather than literally complying with the wording in the legislation, and to give some perhaps further guidance, as the council's interested in that. At the same time, that indicate that if anyone who is currently obligated to feels that they need time, then if they between, and I'm certainly open to a majority of the council or any other suggestions that the council may have, you know, that if they file a plan of compliance, that we will give them 12 months, or July 2010, to come into compliance, but that they would be able to operate under, you know, the plan that they submit that would then cause no citation to be issued during that compliance period. Now, you know, I'm not trying to claim, you know, uniqueness in this idea, the council's will is certainly what will follow, but first things first, and right now, the first thing that needs to be done is to address the moratorium, if the council's inclined to do that. And so, what I might suggest before, and I'll be happy to, you know, open it up to comments, because that's part of what we want to do, but, you know, the only thing that would be on for tonight, then, would be to authorize us to withhold enforcement of this legislation until July 1st of this year, and give us time to come back in with something that could do, could go from any end of the legislative spectrum to completely withdraw the legislation, or to amend it in a way that would make compliance perhaps more, more able to be done over a broader period of time, and perhaps even change some of the requirements. But that would be up to the council, and that would be done during the time between now and when the moratorium would expire. So, there's a very broad parameter of things that the council would do. You know, the only thing, again, on the agenda tonight is to, first of all, give us that window that would let us decide what would be, what a majority of the council might want to do between now and the 1st of July. So, that's what's on for tonight. Now, you know, since we have, you know, half a dozen or more that are interested in that, I just want to make sure you know that unless there's an amendment, that that's what is before the council for tonight. So, I know we've got a number of folks that are interested, I know we've got a number of recognitions that we want to give to people who participate in the Christmas parade, so I would ask that, you know, if you are here to speak on that, that you recognize perhaps maybe the better, best time to speak is when we bring up, you know, some legislation a little bit later, unless you're opposed to us giving a moratorium. You know, so with that introduction, it would be my intention, unless the council wants to do otherwise, to go ahead and open this item up, and then see if we can dispose of it. If not, then we can go ahead and deal with the Christmas parade. Alderwoman Ross?
I mean, I do want to go open it up, but I want to hear from everybody that's here, because there's, I've heard so many things this week that we had no idea what this was going to entail, and I would like to hear from the ones that are here on this, that came to speak on this.
Well, they're welcome to. I mean, I'm not, I'm certainly not going to try to dictate, I'm just saying, you know, because when we open it up, a number of people have spoken to it, but like I said, the only thing, unless this council amends the legislation, the only thing is, is to open, is to give a four-month window. So, if somebody's opposed to that, then we obviously want to hear. If they want to talk about this otherwise, then they're certainly welcome to, you know, but I would encourage folks to save their lengthy comments, you know, until, until we actually have something that might have a benefit, but nobody, I'm certainly not cutting anybody off, Alderwoman.
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
You know, because we're in the three-minute, or is it five-minute comment? Three minutes, so it's only three minutes per person. My thing is that, you know, they've come out tonight to speak on this, and I don't want to have to come back and maybe miss when it's back up.
Well, we also have a lot of room full of folks that came to talk about the, and I was just trying to see if we could short circuit that, but it doesn't appear that's the case, so let's go ahead and go forward with the, with the Christmas parade, and then we'll deal with that secondly. We have Mr. Rick Scott and perhaps Mr. Jim Stanley of the North Little Rock Surtooma Club, are they here, one or both? Okay, let's go ahead, we'll get that out. We appreciate the people coming for that, and I was trying to see if we could move things along, but it doesn't appear like we want to do it that way. So, we're, we're indeed excited. Rick, if you want to come to the microphone, and we are very appreciative of the North Little Rock Surtooma Club, we had a great Christmas parade, and we have a chance to do this every year, and we're very proud of both this opportunity, as well as those people who participate in our Christmas parade. So, with that, if I can turn it over to you, let's go forward.
Well, thank you very much. Bob and Pat could not make it tonight, as you, some of you know, they have, they are moving to Arizona, so they have left it in my hands, and this is the first time I've been up here, even though I know some of you, this is the first time we've ever done the Christmas parade, so y'all are going to have to kind of lead me in this as to what you expect and how this has been done in the past.
What we, we pretty well turn it over to the Surtooma, and I know that they, as we can say, share those trophies. We've done it several different ways, sometimes I've helped, sometimes I haven't, and we...
Which works better for you, Mayor?
I'll be happy to help.
I was going to say, Rick, you need a helper, Rick.
And then, other than that, just however y'all want to announce the winners, and then we'll call them up, and Mr. John Jones is here to preserve this for the future, and we are excited about making a part of our Christmas...
You'd rather do it this way than just call for a stampede?
Well, the stampede wouldn't be too good to photograph.
Yeah, you have, Mayor, you have.
All right. A lot of times, as you said, we sort of make up this tradition as, in some respects, as we go, but the Mayor's Cup is the general overall, you know, I guess winner of the... A lot of times, uh, as you said, we, uh, we sorta make up this tradition as, as in some respects as we go, but the Mayor's Cup, uh, is the general overall, uh, you know, I guess winner of the, uh, of the, uh, uh, Christmas parade and, uh, and one who, uh, moves forward best in, uh, in overall talent. Uh, we're happy to have been a part of this with our high school, the North Little Rock Stars, are they here, are some of them? All right, uh, terrific group of young, uh, youngsters that, uh, literally go all over the state and, uh, and sharing some of their talent and, uh, and we're very happy. And what's your name? Melina Snow, uh, is, was one of the stars and we're gonna, uh, uh, present this trophy and I'm gonna come around there too real quick since it's the Mayor's Cup and, and... Uh-huh, that's it. It's, it's overall. Yeah, and, uh, you're, we're gonna, we're gonna let you say something since that's the Mayor's Cup. Okay? You can just say thank you if you want to.
Thank you, Mayor Patrick Hayes.
You're welcome. All right, that sounded good. Now we can go on, uh, and, uh, let's see. Bill, why don't you come over here? We're gonna draft the city attorney's office into this. Why don't you read these out and then, uh, we'll, uh...
You sure with my pronunciation?
Oh, yeah.
At least it won't be mine.
All right. Chairman's Choice Union Pacific Railroad.
Okay, we're good friends from UP. We, uh, our largest private employer, come on over here and get between us and we'll, uh, we thank UP and, uh, thank y'all for all the hamburger packs.
Satorum Special Award, Ms. Karen's Dance School. Ms. Karen's Dance School.
All right, we, uh, I know that, that I've got two granddaughters that are dancing there tonight, so, uh, maybe she's, uh, struck and we should dance.
Ms. Karen's Dance Studio. Uh, Special Recognition Award Glover Towing and Recovery.
All right, we sure appreciate that. All right, thank you. All right, we got it tonight.
Okay.
All right, we look forward to next year.
Best Church Float Wizards of Christmas.
All right.
All right.
Wizards of Christmas?
That's, okay. Wizards of Christmas. Second Best Church Floats Universal Peace. All right. Um, Best Community Salvation Army. Have anyone, okay? Second, Arkansin Queen, um, Boatmobile. And third, anyone from MEMS here? Okay, uh, Best Club Entry Red Hot Glitzy Girls?
Oh, my gosh. All right, Red Hot, what?
I hope I pronounced that right. I think I...
Glitzy Girls.
Yeah. Second place Post 2935 VFW. I think we have some gentlemen here.
All right. We need some, good young man.
We need some members of VFW.
No bar.
No bar. We need some folks that are VFW. So if, if you're a veteran, uh, of, of foreign wars, you know, Post 2935 would love, uh, love to have you. Hey, thank you.
We need every Saturday, I mean, every third Saturday at, at Golden Corral.
Every third Saturday, Golden Corral, North Little Rock, you know, and they do generate hamburger packs. Third place North Little Rock Police Department Academy Alumni. Best Dance Performing Float Lisa Academy Dance Team. Best Marching Band North Little Rock High School Marching Band and Color Guard. Second place North Little Rock East Freshmen Band. Third place Leap Forward Academy, anyone here? Okay. Best Sorority Zeta Phi Beta Miss Blue Review. Uh, second, all right, Mayor, you're Zeta Amica North Little Rock Chapter. All right. Best School Presentation North Little Rock High School Spirit Truck.
All right.
Second place North Little Rock High School Army Junior ROTC. Third place North Little Rock East Campus Student Council. Okay, next, uh, Best Boy Scout Entry Cub Scout 87, Troop 87. Okay, Best Business Commercial Float Pulaski Bank Let There Be Peace On Earth. Second place Citadel Broadcasting. Third place Royal Repair. Okay, Best Business Civic Organization North Little Rock Else Lodge 1004.
All right. Thank you, thank you for being here.
We appreciate it. Y'all come on, y'all come on, we get everybody in the picture. Okay, come on over here, I'll get on the, I'll get on the outside. Come on, there we go.
All right, thank you.
Third place Simotor Shriners, anyone from the Shriners here? Audible mention North Little Rocks Satormia Club.
I can take this one.
All right, get your picture with the mayor.
All right. All right. Oh, yeah, well.
Best Miscellaneous Entry Broadway Joe Video Show. Second place Arkansas Travelers Baseball Club. Best Sports Team North Little Rock Girl Softball. North Little Rock High School Swim Team. North Little Rock... Oh, oh, he's here again, come on, I'm sorry. You got another picture.
That man right there is head coach.
Uh, North Little Rock Panthers Football and Cheerleaders.
We'll make sure that, uh, we'll work with the Trump Club, those that weren't able to make it here tonight, we wanna make sure they get their trophies and we'll ensure that that happens.
Best Non-School Performing Group North Little Rock Police Athletic League Taekwondo. Second place Melrose Community Outreach. Third place All-Star Youth Queen of Queens. Best Decorated Commercial Service Easter Scrap Metal. Second place Razorback Concrete Twinkle Truck. Third place Philip... Philip's Brother Towing. Best Fire Department North Little Rock Fire Department. Best Royal Fire Department McAlmont Fire Department. Second place East Pulaski County Fire Department.
Thank you, we appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks, appreciate it, thank y'all. Best Antique Car Club Rock City Cruisers. Best Antique Car Chevy Convertible Tom Brown.
Why don't you come on?
Oh. Well, come on.
You don't pay his company, we don't get the money.
You don't owe me half a dollar.
He has his car.
Third place Antique Police Car. Okay, all right, come on back Diana. Best Musical Presentation Good Hair Day and APA.
How y'all doing? Thanks, thank you. This is...
Hair Day is Bob?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, sir. Good Hair Day. Best North Little Rock Municipal Float North Little Rock Animal Shelter.
All right, here we go.
I'm like, what's that?
All right, all right, absolutely. See, all right, thank you, thank you. All right, okay, there we go.
Okay.
Oops, there we go. We okay, we got, all right.
Uh, we appreciate what y'all do, as always, thanks. All right. Second place North Little Rock Electric Company.
All right.
Best Horse Drawn Entry LR Horse and Carriage. Best Horse and Riders, anyone here from the Wild Bunch? Second place Down To Earth. Third place B&amp;M Riding Club. And fourth place Ricks Recycled Horses. Well, that's it, Mayor.
Um, second place Antique Car, true. Second place Antique Car.
Antique Car? Yeah, we, uh, I thought we pulled that up. All right, well, let's, let's see. I need double check on that. The 1949 Studer Baker?
All right, come on up. All right, now, we're gonna double check, make sure we didn't overlook somebody, so, you know, if it, if it did good, blame the law.
That's...
All right, y'all, y'all, okay, come on up here. We're digging up the right trophy.
The 1949 Studer Baker Ferrell Roberts.
Yeah, their Best Antique Car, second place. Best Antique Car, second place.
Yes.
Okay, there you go, hon, make sure you... Nice to see you, Sidney, what's your name?
Scott.
Scott?
Scott.
Scott, I'm sorry, Sidney Scott, let's give it for Sidney Scott. All right, is anybody that we missed, uh, that was here for a trophy and we either neglected the call or misnamed it? Well, thank y'all, uh, to all those who came and thank y'all very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want my trophy and go home.
Well, hey, and we'll make sure we work with y'all to get them out to the other folks.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, this thanks North Little Rock Certoma Club one more time.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, we're right now on a public, scheduled public, uh... Scheduled public hearing, uh, we're looking at, uh, at talking about the sign, the length of time for the signs, but I think there are probably more people here that like to deal with the, uh, uh, legislation regarding the, uh, screening ordinance. So assuming that that's gonna be correct, uh, Ms. Whitby, uh, unless there's an objection from the council, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to call, uh, R-0918. You'd read it?
Yes, sir, a resolution declaring a moratorium on enforcement of Section 1224B of Ordinance 7697, the zoning ordinance regarding screening requirements for existing dumpsters until July 1, 2009.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, before I, you know, call it for a vote, uh, you know, you know, I wanna give people an opportunity to speak because there may be some who, uh, would wanna speak against this. Uh, so, uh, at this point, let me refresh everyone's memory, uh, if you have signed up, I'm gonna, uh, take you, uh, at your word. We have a number of folks who signed up for R-0918 and I can call you out, but, uh, be honest, I think I'd just go ahead and at this point, check you off, uh, for those who might wanna speak. Again, uh, let me just refresh your recollection, all this legislation does is says we won't enforce it till July of this year. Uh, and it would be my intent to come back with a recommendation, uh, to the council at the next meeting, uh, that would somewhat take us in the direction, uh, unless I hear, you know, of, of other suggestions from the council, uh, and trying to do something that would take us or give us a procedure after July 1st. So with that, again, the only thing before us is to set off enforcement of this, uh, until July 1st of this year with the anticipation of coming back in and doing something that would, uh, govern this council and this city's, uh, approach to that post, uh, July 1st of this year. Before I open it up to, uh, the, uh, those that have signed up, I'll see if any council member wants to make any comment.
I do.
Okay?
I just remind, there's a three-minute time limit. I don't want anybody to not be able to, you know, say what they wanna speak, I just wanna remind them.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I've got, I've got, I've got a watch on my arm, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep, you know, keep some time. So again, let me ask, uh, unless there's any other council member, Alderman Gaines?
Uh, since about, uh, 75% of those people that are gonna speak tonight, and I'm glad they're here, and I encourage y'all, I send emails too, but please keep in mind, I don't want y'all mad or anything at the end of this, we are listening to y'all, but the only thing is the mayor's trying to say is before us is to put it off. We don't know what to do about, or I don't know what to do, maybe the other eight do, uh, what to do about someone that's already done that and spent their money. I don't know what to do about someone, uh, they may, but I don't, tonight, what to do about how this was enforced or whether it's fair or unfair, too high, too low. So please, when it's over with and we vote on this to probably, unless someone makes an amendment or something, something like that, the likely out hood, outcome, no matter what anybody says, will be to put it off and not to procrastinate or not to do anything to flimflam anybody or anything like that, but to simply say what we're gonna do mainly about the 20% of, of business people, business folks that have already done this. We don't know whether, uh, or how we should handle that. So anyway, I don't know if that's real, just straight, we're gonna vote, only thing before us is to put this off. Does that make sense? Okay, Charlie.
All right, any other, Alderman Height?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have an opportunity to discuss this resolution after...
Absolutely.
After public.
Absolutely.
Good.
Uh, okay, so this is just a little bit out of order, uh, but we certainly don't mind doing that for those that are here. If you signed up to speak on R-0918, please come to the microphone and, uh, let us know, recalling that we try to keep these comments within three minutes and, uh, again, we're still gonna have something before us later. Yes, sir?
Uh, I just wanna thank you for allowing me to get up here. I'm Dennis Tolan, Pachan Tolan Company, and, uh, I know most of y'all and, uh, this is a first for me, so I'll either hit the... I just wanna thank you for allowing me to get up here, I'm Dennis Tolan, with John Tolan Company, and, uh, I know most of y'all, and, uh, this is a first for me, so, uh, I'll either hit the floor, or, I won't last long. So you don't have to worry about me rambling, but, um, I've done it both ways, I built one, I have six dumpsters, I built one, I enclosed one dumpster, just to see what would happen. And, uh, the, our, I own two hundred and ten units of apartments, and they, they will not use them. And that, that particular dumpster, oh, they'll use it, but the, the garbage will not go in the dumpster. It will hang on the edge of the fence, or I'll have to hire somebody to clean the mess up, which'll take thirty minutes, I've cleaned it up before, and also, it's a security problem. We had an Hispanic that was robbed at gunpoint, and that was somebody that was hiding at night, waiting for somebody, particularly an Hispanic, because they are a walking ATM machine, and they know they carry money on them. But, um, I wished we could go back into these, this ordinance, and penalize the ones who are not using their dumpster right. I know it's to beautify the city, and if, and if, they're not using the dumpster right, and there, there's stuff that are strolled around it, then the citation oughta come, rather than penalize everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, I'm Rob Callahan, I'm with Callahan Real Estate, um, I've actually gone a couple of steps further, I've gone in front of the Board of Adjustments, uh, the moratorium is a step in the right's direction, but I, I think, like everyone else here, that something else needs to be done, because I think it was hastily thrown together as an ordinance, because the city, I believe, still does not know who to, who to write the ticket to, how to enforce it, who's going to enforce it. Uh, there's a lot of things that still haven't been worked out, and it was supposed to have gone, gone into effect on January the first. As a business owner, it's, it's very costly, it can cost anywhere from eight hundred dollars if you do it yourself, to anywhere to three to four thousand if you have to pour a pad, plus your costs on a monthly expense are going up, because the, the gentleman has to get out of the truck and open the gate, um, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of cost involved in it that, that I don't think were looked at the first time. You know, basically, and, and there's a lot of people that I've heard that say if they have to do it, that they'll move their business out of town so they don't have to. In my business, I have to have a dumpster, um, there's no, um, real way to cover my dumpster on JFK. I called the city three different times, when I installed it, there was nothing, I was well within all my rights, and I was well within any city code, and then this comes along with no grandfather, um, I was denied my Board of Adjustment hearing, the, the variance, because the, the committee told me to put the dumpster on another private individual's property, that was their answer to the problem, which obviously should not be the city's answer to that problem, but, I mean, there's just so many logistic nightmares involved in this ordinance, that I don't think that it was, it was completely looked at before it was adopted. Hopefully, I've just made a lot of points that greatly, you know, we, we all oppose it, and hopefully, you will come up with something that's a little better, um, or might meet all of our needs.
That's what we try to do, uh, that's an effort, yes, sir, Mr. Ard?
Good evening, I'm James Ard. First, the way I think we can help the ones that's already done it, if we can redo the ordinance, let's let them have some of their privileged taxes for a few years, they did what y'all requested, now you apparently have got problems with it. To reiterate what Mr. Tolan said, and Mayor, I'm not trying to be funny with this, I was driving around some apartments, a male and female come out behind the dumpster, it was enclosed, one of them was getting his clothes back on, so you know what's going on in there. You're making a problem there that's gonna create more problems for people that live in these apartments. Just please reconsider what can happen, what if you get someone killed or something, as Mr. Tolan indicated, about someone hiding behind the fence, do y'all want that on your conscience? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ard.
Hey, I'm Marvin Key with Arkansas Industrial Machinery, we're down on Thirty-Eighth Street, uh, our whole neighborhood is primarily businesses, uh, some residential, mainly rental properties, uh, and most of it's owned commercial C3, I believe. Uh, you exempted industrial, but we've got several people like ourselves, that we have no choice but to use dumpsters, we can't use city trash pickup, and we've priced the cost of this, and it's around two thousand dollars to comply, but it's also, it's in a neighborhood that, at night, there's nothing goes on, and it gives, we've been broken into three or four times, and this just gives burglars a place to hide, it gives people with misconduct in their mind a place to hide, and the other part of it is, it's gonna cost us more money, because the dumpster people are already charging us extra for a, a lock. We put locks on there to keep the public from using it, I'm sure several other businesses are doing the same thing, so we're paying extra there, now they tell us if we have a gate, you know, it's gonna cut their pickups about half a number, so the production goes down, so we're gonna, we're gonna pay for it. And I support this moratorium, in fact, I support the moratorium out of two thousand thirty-five, or something like that. Because, you know, it's, it's just a piece of legislation that appears to have been hastily done, and I talked to, to Mike Drake today, and I told him it was coming, and I said that one of the aldermen had told, uh, one of us that, where were you people when this was proposed in two thousand seven? Well, my answer to him, and is to you guys, we were running our business, we were employing people, we're paying taxes, we had no idea that something like this was gonna be imposed on us, and that's about all I got to say, but I just wanted to say I support the moratorium forever.
Thank you, sir, next, uh, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Claudia Grabett, and, uh, my brother Dennis Tolan spoke just a few moments ago, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and, um, I, like the others, feel that we needed to have put a little bit more thought in into it before we passed it, and I, for one, even though we are ones that have complied, my feelings would not be hurt. You know, I, I know that maybe some of the others might be, but my, the safety of my, of the residents are primary, and I don't mind the fact that we've already spent the money, I would rather have spent the money and be able to take that away and have my residents be safe, and in an economy like we have now, where everybody's struggling, I don't wanna place any more financial burden on our residents. Uh, they, they, all of us have enough, uh, enough burden, as you well know, and I just feel like that, that maybe it, you know, during this moratorium, maybe we could all sit down and think about what we could do, um, maybe just what Dennis Tolan suggested. The ones that aren't keeping it clean, you know, we don't wanna be known as North Litter Rock, we are proud of our city, and, and I, for one, when I drive down the street, yes, I wanna see, I don't mind seeing a dumpster, as long as it's clean, kept clean around it, and if it's not clean, then perhaps contacting the owner, you know, code enforcement could, uh, could drive through, and those that aren't consistently keeping it clean, give them a warning, and then I think they should be fined. But I, I appreciate your allowing me to speak, and that's, that's just the way I feel about it, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question, what business, uh, you represent?
Oh, John Tolan Company, it's...
He was the Tolan Company, okay.
Two hundred and ten apartment units.
Yes, sir?
Yes, sir, my name is Tony Runge, my brother and myself represent the Gettin' Place here in North Little Rock, MacArthur Drive, also operate McDonald A TV on Council Massy in North Little Rock, we have dumpsters at both locations, when I first heard this, doing it come up, I kinda thought it was a joke, because, I mean, I always thought the purpose for a dumpster was, instead of having twenty or thirty trash cans sit around with trash poking out of them, is the dumpster looks a lot better. We've used two different companies, and both of the companies we've used for dumpsters, and they do a pretty good job of keeping the dumpsters painted and looking pretty decent, but I don't see the purpose for the fence, we have another location in Hot Springs, where we put our fence up when we first did the deal over there, the, the, it's, the fence is continually getting torn down by the dumpster, as they empty the dumpsters, they never set them down in the, in the same place, so there's general maintenance, if you keep the fence up, there's, there's continual maintenance, it has to be done there. But I just really don't think that this is an answer, and I think it, I agree with the other people that have said that it needs to be handled on a case by case basis, I mean, I don't want our place looking terrible, I mean, we, we pick up around both of the dumpsters that we have now, and I just don't think that it's necessary at all to have the enclosure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I'm really nervous, my name is Becky Scott, and my husband's David Squires, and, um, we're just a one person company, and I guess I have too much time on my hands, because Friday I spent nine hours of my day, and I drove around to, I drove around Macar, MacArthur Drive, 107, JFK, and, um, Camp Robinson, and I've picked everybody that I could see that had a dumpster that wasn't in compliance, and I just got out of my car and I went in it. I know, I had too much time on my hands, but most of them were people like me and David, that, I mean, we're in a recession, and we, we struggle to do what we can do, and most of them, I, granted, did not know even anything about this ordinance, and I made them a copy of the ordinance, I gave it to them, I also gave them all y'all's name and email addresses, I'm sorry, but, uh, most of their feelings, and I think I can speak for a lot of them, they're gonna do like we're gonna have to do, we, we can't afford two thousand dollars. You know, we have a nice building, you know, and we keep it nice, we keep the dump, dumpster filled up and not cluttered around it, but we're of the opinion that we're probably gonna have to just have our dumpster removed and go to trash cans, and, uh, most of the people that, I went to fifty-seven businesses, and I have their names and their phone numbers here, and most of them are gonna have to do the same thing, so, that's gonna hurt the dumpster people's business too, and I, I talked to all three dumpster people this morning, BFI Waste Management and WCA, I think, and they were supposed to be here tonight, and, I mean, they've already picked up a lot of dumpsters, a lot of people have already, because the deadline was January 1st, which we didn't know about, but, I mean, they've already picked up a lot of dumpsters, and they're losing business, and like a friend of ours, they spent the money December, and had the, the work done, and the first time the dumpster man came, the, his dumpster truck hit the thing, and now their gate won't open or close, and, and their opinion is that, and on the, uh, ordinance, it says you have to do it, but it doesn't say you have to maintain it, and so that's kinda scary, 'cause it's gonna start looking bad, 'cause, you know, it's a big expense to do it to begin with without having, it doesn't say anything about maintaining it, and that's gonna cost money to maintain it. But anyway, we're just a small business, and we're in a recession, and money's tight, and, and we, like, we got broke into a bunch of times last year, and got cars stolen out of our thing, we spent over five thousand dollars for burglar alarms, you know, and we just can't afford to surround our dumpster, we wanna protect our property, we'd rather do that, but, anyway, thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you. Uh, don't see anyone else, uh, that has asked to speak, now remember, again, I'm, you know, probably running in the ground, but the only thing we're gonna vote on tonight, unless there's an amendment, is to set this over until July 1st, and give us a chance to come in and do everything from undoing it, to modifying it, to making something, you know, that, uh, may be more livable, and I won't know one of the things that, that I saw, just to make sure, and then the enforcement of it may be different, so I'm not trying to say that this is uniform, but the, the screening purpose, uh, at least in the ordinance, indicates it can be one, two, three, or four sides, so, you know, that's what it does say, but any event, uh, you know, that's all we're voting on tonight, is to give us some time to take a look and see what might be, uh, consensus of the council and the community to change, Alderman Gaines?
What about, uh, Mr. Bowles here, can we talk to him for a second?
Uh, yeah, if you want to.
I do, I really do, if you don't mind.
No, uh, do we need to talk to him before we vote?
We bet, please.
Alright, Mr. Bowles?
Well, 'cause, 'cause they're here about this, Robert, now, I've got it in front of me, I, you know, this, council, no, I sponsored this, and wanna do everything I can to clean up the third ward, and I feel very strongly in, in some of the things we do, but here's where I, where I've got off, it says screening may be accomplished by, and then like the mayor said, but number two says a partial dumpster enclosure, one, two, or three sides, right?
That's correct.
An opaque, uh, six foot opaque fence, year round landscaping, I'm just gonna read, or full dumpster enclosure, now, what I understand, though, they're being told, or the planning commission changed this, or they're being told they have to have four sides, what I understand, and ten to twelve feet high?
It's, it needs to not be seen from a street or from residents nearby, I talked to a gentleman on Thirty-Eighth today, he's just gonna move his around to the north side of his building and put one wall up, and that'll complete his, uh, screening of his dumpster, it'll be out of sight, uh, the residents, uh, west of him have a screening fence, and the only street would be Splawn Drive, so, um, it, it's all in each case, what's possible, but if you can, if you can put up a one wall screen and accomplish your screening, that would do the trick.
Okay, now, I'm responsible, you know, for getting this, for sponsoring this, and, and so I currently say that, but that intent of this was not to cost someone, you know, eighteen hundred dollars, that's all, two thousand dollars, absolutely, and especially now the economy's changed so much, but, tell us, and I'm gonna close on this, will you let us know what the, how, did you send out letters to every business person?
We did, last spring, we got all the business license and mailed out thirty-five hundred letters, uh, we've been communicating over the last year with people, uh, doing the best we can to get the word out, uh, there's been several newspaper articles, but, uh, you know, until there starts to be enforcement, I, I, some people, of course, were right on top of it and tried to comply as best they could. Now, if you go back a little bit in history, the planning commission, through their development review, required screening of dumpsters, they're wanting to beautify the community, and all new developments, they tried to, to do that, like North Shore Business Park is pretty much all screened, and, and everything is pleasing, back in two thousand and five, this was added to the zoning ordinance for, uh, new development, so, uh, anything under new development, the planning commission's reviewing those, um, but in the last year, we've been going out trying to retrofit the existing ones, and it is a big job.
Okay, well, you know, I am sorry for any inconvenience I cause on this, and I, and I do mean that, so anyway, well, uh, that's all I have, but the bottom line is, that's a lot of money, and if you just figure out some way to, I don't know, I don't know what we do about the other half, anyway, that's all I wanna say, and I apologize for that.
Well, just like I said, tonight is one step, and then it'll give us a chance to see what we wanna do as a council, so if anybody else wants to mention, yes, and then Alderman Height, Alderman Ross?
Uh, this is for Mr. Bowles, I pulled out my original, you know, the ordinance, when this was passed, and it says that it must be placed on concrete pad with concrete apron, and then...
That's with the new construction.
That's for new construction only?
With new developments, we, we require the concrete pad, so that, because we know the history, that if you're bringing in a new development, it will destroy, you know, what's in front of it.
On the existing, existing dumpsters, a concrete pad is not required, but I think there's been some miscommunication on that also, too.
Just to screen, in order to screen the, from the street view, and from residences.
Okay, that's, that's where I was getting...
Of course, we've waived the, uh, requirements on industrial, but if you can, like in the back of malls, they're out of sight, uh, that should be satisfactory with, with most everyone, um, like McCain Plazas, all the backs have the outside dumpsters, but they're not seen by the public, so they're out of sight. Uh, River City, Riverside Furniture, up on JFK, they're out of, they're big dumpsters out of sight, so we wrote a letter saying that that's in compliance with the intent of the ordinance.
Okay, I think that clears up some, because some were confused that the concrete pad had to be for the existing...
It's only new construction, new construction. Alright, again, Alderman Height?
Uh, I'm the one that, uh, asked, I passed around this ordinance that we passed back in, uh, March of, uh, two thousand and four, that dealt with a very similar issue, had to do with, uh, regulations for trash dumpsters and other purposes, and let me read a portion of it, it said that all trash dumpsters that are active as a trash receptacle within the city limits shall... as a trash receptacle within the city limits shall be secured and maintained as follows. At all dumpsters, section one, number one, says that all dumpsters shall be maintained in a sanitary manner that will not cause odorous or rank smells. These dumpsters shall also be maintained in a manner with no... Which no trash, rubbish, or debris is located outside of the dumpster. And then for those that have doors, the doors to the trash dumpsters, they'll be closed at all times when trash is not being deposited into or emptied from the dumpster. If my memory serves me correct, and Alderwoman Robinson, your name is on this, this ordinance was passed, this legislation was passed because of some people that just weren't taking care of their dumpsters. And I'm guessing it was in your ward, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I had a very lengthy conversation with Mr. Wayne Rathman today concerning this dumpster issue. He and I have worked out a plan or a system in the past that if somebody complains about one of the companies servicing a dumpster in the wee hours of the morning, that he's instructed his drivers to change their route or change their time. And he's also working with the other dumpster companies to alleviate that problem. So anytime it comes up that has to do with the noise, he's worked with us more than he had to to get that cleared up. He's also offering to work with us on cleaning up this ordinance about the dumpsters and making sure that his customers are adhering to this ordinance that we passed some five years ago. Now, I'm gonna support the moratorium tonight, but I'm also gonna be on a campaign, starting after tonight, for us to either repeal this ordinance that's in question. But I'm also...
You had heard his oar, so just, you know, we need to...
But I'm also on a campaign that if there's anybody in North Little Rock that's in violation of this ordinance, we need to take care of that. So somewhere between repealing the ordinance and tweaking it and changing it to where it's a win-win situation for not only the city council, but for the businesses and for the companies that service dumpsters, I'm gonna be on a crusade to get that done. Now, this is one time when, in my last eight years of experience here on the city council, when this amount of people are hollering, we need to listen. We need to listen, all right? And we need to make sure what we do is benefits a lot of people in North Little Rock. So for that point, I'm gonna be voting for the moratorium tonight. But also, I just want you to know that I'm gonna be on a crusade to make it right, no matter what we do, between now and the time we do it. Thank you.
Let me... Okay, anyone else? Alderwoman Ross?
No, the whole thing, I think that, I think everybody up here pretty much agrees with you on that. The question is, how do you make that right for the ones that have done this?
Well, that's something that we'll...
That's the question. That's the...
That's something that we'll need to work out in the next ever how many weeks or months that we're gonna deal with this.
Let me, you know, if everybody's finished, let me make this suggestion. You heard what my thoughts were, and I really by no means claim, you know, to have the pathway that we might want to follow. Let me just say this, that, you know, between now, let's skip a council meeting and ask anyone to consult with the city attorney. And any thoughts that people have, you know, you certainly heard mine, and I, again, claim, you know, don't claim... You know, I don't think any of us want to place any more of a burden. You know, the idea was to screen the visual aesthetics of a dumpster from, you know, to me at least, the major, at least major thoroughfares and perhaps collectors. I don't think, you know, I don't know how many are not on those streets, and I certainly wouldn't intend to think that they ought to be on all sides necessarily. So, you know, whether we want to go all the way back, you know, that's certainly an option. Or whether we want, you know, to try to modify this in a way that one screen, you know, that would take care of a majority of the traffic in terms of the visual, you know. Whether we might want to exempt apartments, you know, because, I mean, I can understand they're somewhat unique. I don't think anybody wants to make this a burden, and maybe to the extent that it's not a burden, maybe we want to take a hard look at exactly, you know, the enforcement side. Now, Alderman Height, I didn't see a penalty on that enforcement, on that legislation. Now, it may be a part of a section that gives it a general penalty to it. But, you know, obviously, if there's no penalty, you know, it's gonna be less inclined for somebody to get behind doing it. Now, it may be in a section, I don't know, you know, that does have an overall penalty, but I didn't see any penalty behind Alderwoman Robinson's legislation. So, you know, why don't we take a month, two council meetings, you know, the next council meeting, you know, I'll consult with the city attorney's office prior to filing deadline and see if there's been any suggestions. I'm sure that you can work with his office to see if there's any legislation that you might want to develop, if any. And then we'll plan on getting together in a month and see what's filed. So I ask you to pay attention to the, you know, because I'm gonna assume that we're gonna adopt this moratorium, and pay attention. So we'll kind of look to moving something forward, if anything, you know. So, you know, we file, you know, on the Tuesday before council meeting, and so it's public knowledge. You can contact the city clerk's office. It should be in the media about what we might do. But we won't do anything next council meeting. At least, I don't intend to do anything next council meeting. And we'll see if there are any ideas that people have, and we'll put it on the agenda. And I'll work to put mine on there, you know, in terms of trying to give some flexibility. We don't want, you know, my idea, again, to the extent that there is one, is, you know, to make it as minimal as possible and to screen from the maximum amount of eyes that, you know, can be done. And I just assume it'd be one wall as noble. I mean, as putting some plants. I mean, if you've got some, you know, plants growing, you know, and it doesn't do it the first year, you know, I mean... So I don't think anybody really wants to put a burden. So if there's a way that we can do something in a minimal way and at minimal cost, I think we're all trying to look for that. So with that, let me ask, I think there's a motion that's been moved and seconded on the moratorium. If there's any discussion on that, it's now open for discussion. On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, we're home free till July 1st. Now, we're gonna, at least in telling any enforcement now, but let's keep working on this and see if we can come up with something that, you know, that we can all feel better about. And I think we will. Let me just go ahead and take two minutes, and any of those that are here for this issue, feel free to leave. You're welcome to stay. So I'll take a two-minute recess.
Well, I mean, you know, it was good intentions, everybody.
What are you doing nowadays?
How are you doing? Well, you know, we should, well, next time we'll do it. It was interesting, you know.
Let me go ahead and reconvene the council meeting and while these other council members are coming, we are back to the public hearing on the sign zoning ordinance and before we get into that, let me just go ahead and take a minute or two and report to the council a little bit of where we are. I know that I distributed to department heads and to the council members by email last week, a summary of the stimulus package and more and more, we're getting more and more information. I had an opportunity along with the mayor of Little Rock to be invited to go to the White House last week, last Wednesday, no actually Thursday morning, I left Wednesday, but Thursday morning, I'd have to say that I was a part of roughly 80 mayors that spent about two-thirds of a day in Washington. The first half of the day was spent at the White House and started off with us being able to have a bit of an informal few minutes with five secretaries, cabinet secretaries, the attorney general, the secretary of HUD, the secretary of transportation, the secretary of energy, and the secretary of education. All were a part of a panel that visited with the 80 mayors for roughly an hour and a half. The evening before, those same, virtually same group of mayors got together for a working evening to discuss the different opportunities that we had and to try to ensure that a message was conveyed in several different areas, you know, one of which was to try to have a beneficial effect on both learning about and encouraging the input of local government across the country. We finished the hour and a half with the five secretaries and then we had a 15-minute break and then the vice president Biden introduced the president Obama and we spent 45 minutes with the president and vice president after the meeting was adjourned. The vice president stayed with the mayors for informal discussion. We later adjourned to the, back to the hotel for a working lunch. We had a variety of folks at that lunch, the administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency, which again was another cabinet-level official, along with several undersecretaries, one in energy that will be charged with administering the Energy Block Grant Program, which was a program that was advocated over the last two years by local government around the country. North Little Rock's share will probably be somewhere close to what our, and is going to be distributed on a formula basis. There was about $3 billion that was placed in that along with some other competitive grant funding that would go through those energy grants. We're working with, you know, the electric department to deal with that. And then there were two Department of Justice undersecretaries, one of which is administering the burn grants, which is a competitive grant that North Little Rock Police Department has been very successful in doing. The other is the COPS grant, which now has life in it again vis a vis the stimulus package. And Chief Bradley will be responding to a grant application in March that will be out. They tell us that they're going to have a fast turnaround on that. As I indicated, the individual who's going to be administering the federal program in the Justice Department was one of those that we had a chance to visit with. And our 10 positions that we've had unfunded for the last three years, you know, in response to a question, although I thought I knew the answer, that was one question I asked and the answer was yes, we would qualify. I know I've been working with Chief Bradley on making sure that we felt like, you know, we'd qualify for funding on those positions. There is, there was a $75,000 cap plus a portion of that salary would have to be supported by the cities under the old COPS program at this point. Now, at this point, the legislation has no cap on the positions and no match that's required. So I'm optimistic that that will be something that we will have available. And other things that are out there, there's a little, I believe, $210 million that can go toward fire station construction. We've been working with, you know, with the fire department and we're in the process of hiring an architect to move forward to the design of our fire station out on the east side. And we're going to make sure that, you know, we're knocking on the door for federal assistance for the construction of that fire station. You know, the grants, I think while I was gone, I was told that Little Rock was approved for a million eight or nine for 18 or 19 firemen. We are going to process a grant for the same, through the same granting process for firemen to staff that fire station on the east end. You know, back to the police, this is a full funding agreement at the entry level salaries for three years. And by and large, they're working out a formula now, but that by and large will mean that, you know, in terms of retention requirement, we'll be under an obligation to retain those positions for at least a year after the three years are up. And I feel that we're very well committed to doing that. So there's, in looking at the various breakdowns, there is a, at least a breakdown that I've been given, that we have $1,535,893,805 of that stimulus that, you know, is going to be coming directly to Arkansas and this doesn't count some of the other benefits that are going to be allocated in terms of tax breaks and other things. I mean, for example, I think in the bill, as I've been told, because we were given a lot of information and I think now, over the weekend, the governors are now up there being briefed by the White House on, you know, their avenue. You know, the message that we were conveying, you know, was that we're going to get funding through several different avenues, one of which are tax breaks. I understand we may have a $15,000, $15,000 to $18,000, no, $15,000 to $1800 tax credit for weatherization that those of us may want to do. I mean, we're going to, you know, I mean, this is a massive thing that we're going to make every effort to make sure that every opportunity we have will not be ignored by ignorance. It'll be ignored if it will be. It's by choice because I think there are really tremendous amount of opportunities. Our electric department in terms of the grid and energy conservation, there is, in the weatherization program, to give you an example, the largest single category of this billion and a half, it indicates that our highway department is going to get $351,544,468. And we've been, you know, doing all we could to make sure around about, which is, I guess is close to shovel-ready as we, you know, as we know in terms of projects. And there are a variety of other things that we're reviewing. Spent an hour on the phone today with James Lee Witt and Associates in, you know, in making sure that, you know, we can head forward on several fronts. Obviously, the stimulus package, we've got to list Friday to ask for earmarks, which is something that we're also going to, you know, step up to the plate for. So the basic avenues back to the stimulus though, in terms of how we're going to, the money's going to flow, is going to be some allocations directly to the cities. There will be some that go to the cities, but they'll go through the state and there'll be a competitive sort of approach that we have to take with them. And then the third avenue is like the secretary of transportation indicated that there's some discretionary funding that he has that can, you know, make decisions on how, you know, those allocations are going to be made. Transit, transit funding formula, we've got, it shows Arkansas is going to receive $28,409,450 in transit, you know. Also part of the bill, 3% of the funding that's received by the state highway department, you know, will go toward trails or alternate methods of transportation. We, you know, can move to ensure that, you know, that we're working with the highway department, you know, for one of the things that this city is, you know, known for and known very successfully for is our trails. I know Alderman Ross and I have been working on a pathway down what I call the Levy Spur. It's the Camp Robinson Spur. And we've been in conversation with the Union Pacific Railroad and I think we're at a point, you know, where we pretty well concluded that the city needs to acquire that. And so we're in preliminary discussions about what that may cost and how we might best be able to try to achieve that. We're also in discussions with the Arkansas Midland Railroad, who leases, who has a long-term lease with some, not as nearly as long section right away, but right away behind Alderman Thomas's old property that will provide a really nice connection to avoid that, you know, East Broadway, England Highway intersection. Again, we know that by November this year, East Broadway ought to be finished in terms of both stages of it. And we want to try to avoid that. So the opportunities are really very significant in terms of that stimulus and we just are going to work very hard to ensure that, and I appreciate the response, Alderman Witcher, Alderman Ross, I think several of you have communicated with things that we want to ensure that may very well qualify, that we don't overlook them. And yet, at the same time, Mr. Sisson told me today, you know, that our sales tax collections, I think we at least matched January, from January of last year, but that's the first time in four or five months that we matched our sales tax collections for the previous year. So while, you know, while we are focusing on our opportunities vis a vis the $800 billion, at the same time, we are concerned about, you know, the operating expenses that we have and we're going to try to keep a very close review of those dollars. So there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of activity and a lot of opportunity, but it also remains challenges. If anybody in council member wants to ask me any questions, I'll be happy to.
How do they determine how much each state is going to receive? You said the state of Arkansas is going to receive about one and a half billion, 1,500 million or whatever that is?
Well, most of this money that I use in terms of that is based on different formulas. You know, like for example, the National School Lunch Program, equipment assistance, the emergency food stamp program, that's how these things are broken down. So these are formulas that we receive based on existing legislation, perhaps some that's even contained in the new bill. You know, and our home funding, our CBDG, they put a billion dollars in the Community Development Block Grant. As it translates to us, you know, that means that our CBDG funding is going to be 27% more than we received last year. And we received somewhere between 750 and 800,000. So you apply the math to CBDG and you put that one billion and distribute it according to that formula and you can just add 27% and that's what we're going to get. So, you know, most of this has been determined by the allocation of formulas, you know, that are within the stimulus bill. Some of them perhaps are being done by piggybacking on existing formulas. But that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that the energy assistance, well, I say the energy assistance, that, you know, the tax breaks. And by and large, you're looking at, you know, in terms of outflow of dollars, about $500 billion are going to be actually outflowed in terms of things that are listed, you know, here, home funding, homeless prevention, you know, and we're spending $100,000 in homeless. So we may even get some, you know, some benefit from that. The Violence Against Women Grant, so $1,912,000. You know, you go over to weatherization, which, you know, we'll all have, we've been doing a very strong program supporting weatherization. Arkansas is slated to get $50,011,299. And again, I'm sure a lot of that's based on formula. But if you've got tax, different tax break opportunities, then, you know, that's, I think that's probably been figured nationwide on terms of those that they feel will take advantage of it. You know, and if we've got a $1,500 tax credit, which if I'm correct, again, we learn so much, so don't take this as gospel, but if you get a $1,500 tax credit, that's usually dollar for dollar against your tax liability. So, you know, if you do $1,500 worth of weatherization, you know, and you apply for that tax credit on your tax form, then, you know, you wouldn't get that until a year from now. But that's certainly an inducement to go out there and try to enhance your, you know, your home in terms of making improvements from, you know, caulking your windows and just really small things that I think will be very much of an advantage. So, you know, I would encourage, really strongly encourage, you know, the council members, we have a National League of Cities meeting that's coming up, I think the second week of March, if I'm not mistaken. And I would encourage as many of you to try to go as is possible. It's a time commitment, I believe. It's like a Thursday through a following Tuesday, I think. But, you know, if there was ever an opportunity, it's now. And I appreciate the council being sensitive to this and letting us go forward with James Lee Witt. You know, I think it's an extremely opportune time, but there is so much out there that, you know, that we are really challenged to try to make sure that when these decisions are being made, that at least North Little Rock is knocking on the door.
I'm really excited that the president is going to give this money, this stimulus money to us, to the city down here. And I'm just wondering how it's going to be distributed because we got some emails about some things from one of the other aldermen about some of the things that he'd like to see the money used for. And we've got, as you know, a lot of infrastructure things that need to be done over in Ward Three. And we were hoping maybe that the money was going to be evenly distributed among the four wards so that we could, or is the council going to decide where the money's going to go?
Well, the council, in some instances, it's based on qualification. In some instances, like, you know, one of the things that we'll just say that we may very well be eligible for, and that is this, we're in the third year of a three-year program to change out all of our stoplights, go lights, yellow lights, however you want to phrase it. The energy they consume with LED is going to be about 10 to 15% of what we, what the incandescent's consumed. So obviously, you know, the city's going to get that benefit and I'll be all over the place. You know, at the same time, the changing out of the bulbs is like once every, you know, five to seven years. You know, we're, now, the change out is once every year. So the maintenance will be reduced in terms of that. You know, we're talking with a supplier out of Arkansas in terms of trying to see whether some of this energy money might qualify for streetlights. We've been doing some testing. We've not gone into wholesale program, you know, but that might very well be an opportunity. There's some other things that we're looking at from an energy standpoint, that, you know, the weatherization that we could encourage, that anyone that wants to qualify, and there'll be, I'm sure, some qualifications that the federal strings have, you know, that some can take advantage of it, some can. I'm sure there'll be some income levels. And I would imagine some wards will be able to take advantage of it more than others. So, you know, there's some that it just depends on us both educating ourselves and then trying to really move forward and educating, you know, our citizens on what's out there. And yet, some of the funds, you know, might very well be subject to distribution by Ward. And to the extent that that infrastructure opportunities are there, then we certainly will consider it. Just like the CBDG money, that's 27% more and we know how that's done. So, you know, we can take a look at, we know what we can spend that on, so it's fairly easy. A lot of these others, you know, and one other, the one other thing that, there are two things. One is that there is a real desire, and the president expressed this, that there is a real desire to get this money on the street and try to help it start having a positive effect on the community, both in job production and assistance and job retention. But there's another thing too, that the president, if there was a snippet that he was quoted on, that was by and large saying that we're, he's going to give us some flexibility and to try to encourage us, both state and local governments, to try to have a positive effect with these dollars as soon as possible. He also intends to hold us accountable. And that means that, you know, we can't build any bridges to nowhere. Not that this city would, but, you know, there is a, you know, a flavor of that that, you know, is out there in terms of, you know, making sure that, you know, that what we do, and again, I want to repeat, you know, the administration wanted to also emphasize not only will there be accountability, but that accountability can be measured in several ways. And while this is a whole lot of money, you know, we've got the reauthorization of the highway bill that's coming up, you know, we've got a variety of other federal legislation that we'll be dealing with. And I can tell you, you know, that in the eight years of the previous administration, you know, we never had the kind of input and kind of meeting that I was invited to last week, where you had five, and if you want to use the EPA administrator after lunch, six secretaries, all of which had substantial effect on the way local government works, state government operates. But then 45 minutes with the president and vice president, and one of the mayors made the point, you know, that was kind of nice that we, in local government, were invited to the White House before the governors got up there. You know, obviously, we like to both toot our horn, but also at the same time, you know, recognize that a spotlight's going to be on all of us that are going to be receiving these dollars to try to let folks know that, you know, that if we act responsibly and reasonably, then it's the first of a real strong effort over a sustained period of time to try to have a positive effect on the economy, which, you know, continues to, you know, continues to address concerns we have, job production, education, job training. You know, I could go through, and I'll be happy to share this breakdown with any of you, but it goes through, you know, a variety of different things. And I'm not sure exactly what state stabilization, but that's probably one that has the most. And that's $361 million is coming to the state for that category, education for disadvantaged and Department of Labor Grants, Training, Senior Meals Program, I mean, a variety of things. So, again, this was signed, there was a real effort to get this adopted. You know, we have some of the people who actually voted on it complaining that they didn't really know enough to vote. And so this is, you know, we're learning things every day. And we're going to try to learn as much as we can. And like I said, you know, I would encourage any of you who haven't, you know, to be a part of our team that's going to go to NLC. I think now more than any, there's going to be an opportunity to learn about these things. And not all of us can be everywhere at the same time. So those that are able to go, you know, it would be, you know, my intent to try to find these workshops. NLC's already put out notice that there are going to be different workshops on education on this stimulus package. And we've got a lot to do and we sure don't want to avoid missing out because we weren't knocking on the proper door at the proper time with the proper project. I didn't mean to take that long, but it's a time to deal with that. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to respond. Like I said, we had staff meeting today and discussed this. You know, a lot of the projects that y'all, you know, shared with me, some of which qualified, some of which may not. But, you know, the more we're able to deal with this federal stimulus, the more opportunity we'll have to do things for everyone. So, we're here and we are opening the door and we're going to try to do all we can to, you know, again, to make sure we're where we need to be. One of the things that, and I'll try to get the website out, but there's a website that's been prominently displayed in terms of tracking and this is going to be one of the most visible expenditure of funds. And they're going to, they're going to do all sorts of stuff and trying to keep all of us informed on where this money's going, what it's going to be, what it's being used for. Okay, with that, let's go back to the agenda, Ms. Whitby. And I think we've got a public hearing and that public hearing, I'll go ahead and convene at this time. If there's anybody here to talk about the length of timing on our rotating sign ordinance. With that, I'll open the microphone and those that, those who've signed up, I'm not going to look at my list. You know who you are if you're here. We're going to trust you and check off when you come up and introduce yourself. Well, sorry, Mr. Ard, is there a button to push or?
No, I don't miss one.
Okay. Well, we want to make sure they hear you.
Good evening. My name is still James Ard. I want to thank Kerry Gaines for bringing this to everybody's attention. I can tell you from personal experience, when I wasn't-
Mr. Ard.
Testing, good. I can share with you from personal experience because I am able to sell for a sign company. A lot of people wouldn't buy the signs because of the ordinance, because they wanted to do different things with them. It's caused some of the sign companies some money. They're not happy with the city of North Little Rock and I appreciate Mr. Gaines bringing this back, trying to get it fixed. I really didn't see a need that they could cause wrecks and things that they said in the past, but I do appreciate it. And I think a business should be allowed to do what they want to when they're advertising with the longest intended reason. And I hope the two men that's going to vote against it will vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ard. Anyone else signed to speak on this during the public hearing?
Let's be sure and give Alderman Baggett a lot of credit too for this thing sinks or something. Alderman Baggett's on here too. He didn't mention him. He's sponsoring it too.
Microphone's still open, going once, going twice. I'm going to go ahead and, are we going to recess the public hearing or are we going to adjourn it?
Well, I'll adjourn it. There's not anybody else in here.
Well, we adjourn it, but are we going to do it next time or are we just, all right, we'll just go ahead and adjourn the public hearing. Let's see, any citizen signed up to speak on any legislation, if you have, now's the time to do it.
Another was one on a condemnation.
Okay, yes, sir.
My name's Nick Dudley. I live at Nanette Street. The property being condemned is located at Phyllis Street and that's on the property adjacent to mine. And anyway, I've been trying to contact the owners for about three years now and haven't been able to get ahold of them because I'm interested in purchasing it. Anyway, I'm for the condemnation, but I'd like to see the demolition delayed because it does go up for sale due to back taxes on July 14th. And the- And the, I spoke with Mr. Wadley about it. He said the lien that the city would put against it would be about $12,000 if that were to be demolished.
Which one is this?
And that would, that would be in either May or June, just right before the house goes up for sale. And I'd rather not pay $12,000, $13,000 for a lot that's appraised for $1,000.
Well, whether or not it's condemned, that lien, you know, is something that'll be there. Now, we can deal with the lien once it's set. The city has the opportunity to do that. So, you know, I don't know whether you're interested in the house or you're interested in the lot.
No, just the lot.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, you know, tonight's action simply will certify the lien if the council adopts to do that, and then, you know, I don't think we feel like we can recover. Probably, we'll have to end up going up and tearing down the property, and then, you know, whatever, I would imagine what the market value is, is what we'd be willing to work with somebody and trying to sell it for. Now, unless you've got some different part of our rules, I'm not...
Mayor, I apologize. This is a house that has not been torn down yet. Am I correct?
No, it has not been.
No, this, we have, we have several properties that we've torn down, we're certifying for collection, and I believe we have three resolutions on properties. We're asking the city to consider public nuisance to allow us to tear down. So this one is not on the ground.
This is just certifying the lien.
No, this one is to determine whether or not we're going to tear the house down.
Mr. Wadley?
We're going to, what I'm asking is that we go ahead and do the condemnation, but we're going to hold raising the bill until after the tax sale. So if he buys it, it's going to be condemned, so really, he would have to buy it down, or tear it down. So by condemning it, it'll keep somebody else from buying that structure to try to rehab, because it's in really bad shape. So we're not going, we have no plans on tearing it down until after the tax sale.
Okay, so we may work a deal with you for tearing it down. So, I mean, rest assured, we want to, we want to move the property, and we want people to use the property. So today, wouldn't slow that down. In fact, if anything, it may help it.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else signed up to speak on any other legislation? We're going to consider that speaking hour forever. Hold your peace. Let's go to the unfinished business. Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. RO 909, Alderman Gaines.
We'll hold that one more time.
Okay. 00902, Mayor Hayes.
Yeah, me and Alderman Gaines are in the holding mood.
Okay. 00911, Alderman Gaines and Baggett.
We'd like to read that one time and hold it one more time, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending ordinance number 7697, the zoning ordinance regarding electronic changeable copy signs, second reading.
We'll hold that. Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 0912, Alderman Gaines and Baggett.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a self-serve ice machine in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 3621 Camp Robinson Road in the city of North Little Rock. This is the second reading.
Who's spending rails and places on third and final reading?
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a self-serve ice machine in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 3621 Camp Robinson Road in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Before I call it for a vote, Alderman Robinson?
I have a question.
Okay.
About this property. Looking at the drawing, and I noticed that there are shrubberies on Camp Robinson and 37th. What is the entrance to this? Is this through Levy Baptist Church?
Yes, Robert will help us with that. Please.
Yes, ma'am. This was held last year due to access conflict with the neighbors. They've reached an agreement where Levy has its own driveway, and this property would have its own driveways. The planning commission committee is reviewing the two driveways that are being proposed. So this is a small corner lot, and it would have its individual driveways. He's quit claiming property to the adjoining church to resolve any future dispute over that.
Okay. And then my second question, I guess about the building, is the, is this a trailer? What is it?
What would you call it, Robert?
Well, this is a, it's a unit that's purchased. He's going to attach it and rebuild his, the snow cone machine or operation that's been at that corner, and it'll look like these pictures. This will be the south side of the snow cone. The ice machine will be on the north end, and he's trying to get it to look, this is the view from Camp Robinson, so it'll, he's trying to make it look like one. Now, along with this, he's agreeing to pave that lot and put landscaping in. So he's really doing some things that are, you know, it's been a gravel lot all these 20 years, and it's part of the old Share Street. So, and Mr. Lupert is here, but he's asked if I'd help him explain this, that that would be good.
And it's going to look like that drawing?
Yes. He's proposing it to be a, he's, has a loan with the bank. If all this goes through, and he'll bring in the machine and make the buildings look as presented, and you can attach that to the legislation if you'd like.
Mayor, and we, Alderman Robinson, we're just trying to save money and not bring in, what it, obviously, will be a little bit more attractive than that, be paved, it'll have shrubbery around it. It's going to be, he's putting $100, $150,000 into it, so obviously, he believes in this. And the church, the people that live around there, didn't have any problem with it. It's not exactly, you know, what perhaps everyone would want, but it certainly improves the quality of that street and of the church and area around it.
Well, my only thing is, and then I'll, my only thing is that you have a very nice bank across the street from it, and a very nice church, and I just have a real problem, you know, with this going in. I think it detracts more than make things look nice.
I appreciate your sentiments. Have you, have you been about to see it? It does look, it doesn't look very, the quality of the aesthetics right now are really, it's a little gravel, and it's got overgrown, it's a little, okay, so you know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
So we just have steady improvements where we're going. We're just moving forward a little bit at a time.
Well, you know, from our area, you know, we've seen people bring drawings in, and they spend all this money, as they tell us, when they come before us, and then they get out, and they do what they want to do. But I'm sure that this probably is not the case.
Yeah, you can obviously see, we save money on our drawings, so we're going to spend all our money on the, on the building.
Let me, let me, let me see, in order for, you know, the saver, saving on the drawings to be sort of encapsulated in tonight's action, why don't we, unless there's an objection, move that that be attached as an exhibit to this legislation?
Don't move, absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to attach the drawings as an exhibit of what, if there is an affirmative vote, what we understand will be built there?
Now, what I have isn't exactly like that. I mean, it's like that, but it's not colored like that, what I have. Is there something different?
Oh, I've got some for you. I'll bring them over.
Well, Mr. Lupert, his wife prepared this one, and then he hired that one down. I told him his wife did a better job, I think, but...
Okay.
They're both very nice.
The motion, as I understand it, because I helped inspire it, is everything we got, we're going to attach.
Okay.
You know, so we'll just help clarify, you know, at some point, what we generally think we're voting on. So, on the motion to amend by attaching any drawing that we have that's available.
Yes, sir. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Hey, whoever's got a drawing, get it to Ms. Whitby.
I have everything, I think. Okay.
All right, I think we're open for go ahead and have a motion to adopt on third and fa...
Don't move.
Well, I'm sorry, Alderman Witcher and Alderman Height.
Did you get, I think Alderman Ross is first.
I'm sorry, Alderman Ross, I didn't see.
Well, I asked Mr. Boils to have these up here, because I have a question, and I got me a new little handy pointer. Where's Mr. Boils? The one with the front entrance where you can see where the cars are coming around, that one right there? Okay, I get to use my little pointer. This is what I'm worried about, where the kids, you know, where you park right here, and then you go right there to get your snow cones. You've got cars coming around this on both sides. And I've been to snow cone places with several kids before. These kids, are we not worried that they're going to be running over here, running here, and these cars are coming behind, around blind corners? That's my biggest concern right here. At first, I was like, on the snow, but I know that Mr. Lupert has done a lot of work on this, and I've talked to him on what he's going to do. So now, my biggest concern right now is the safety.
The, there's an existing driveway in front of the building. Cars that are going to the ice will go around to the north. Cars that go to the snow cone will drive in and park, and then he's proposing an exit only. So it'll be an entry only and an exit only on the lot. I don't have a vicinity map.
For the ice? The entrance only for the ice?
The, the main driveway that's there will be the entry, and then if you're, if you're wanting ice, you'll go to the north part of the building to purchase ice through the window.
So they don't drive around this way, and then drive around and come out this way?
You'll drive around to the north side where this is located for the vending of the ice bags, and if you're, if you're picking up a snow cone, you'll just stay in the parking lot and then drive south to the exit that he's proposing.
Okay. My, right there is my biggest concern, because you've got to get out of the car and go straight there. So there will not be any cars anywhere over here while you're taking your kids up there.
It is a circle around. I mean, it'll all be asphalted around it. There'll be landscaping around the north and east border with some street trees, but I think this is the best he could do on that narrow lot. It's part of Old Share and the remnants of a lot when we widened Camp Robinson, so it's, it's a difficult lot.
I know, I just, you know, I've taken four and five kids to a snow cone before, and they don't stand right there in front of that window. They're all over the place. And so if you've got cars, that's my concern right now.
Yes, sir.
The artist I paid to draw this picture, thank you for considering this, Mr. Mayor and the Aldermen and women. She didn't draw the flow of the traffic right. I don't know. Can you point at this? Anyway.
Mr. Lupert, thank you, John.
You can borrow my pointer. That's my pointer. Just point at the screen.
It's pointed.
No, the other one. That's the flash there.
The other button.
Right there. See what you're saying, right here? Okay.
Still got the light on.
The top button right there. Don't look at it. Good lighting.
Boils, while you're up there, just look in that door and see if they're in a laser pointer there, not on the one with Ross.
Well, can I?
There you go, okay.
Okay, what's going?
There we go, we've got another laser pointer there.
What's, uh? Try this one.
Oh, my.
Debbie's is brighter. Okay. Okay, the traffic is going, the way it's set up, those arrows are not right. The way it's going to work is, on the right side where the red dot is now, and further over and further up is the driveway. The driveway comes in, and if they want ice, they go like that red dot. When they come out, they don't, they come all the way down on this far side and go, yes, an exit on this end on an exit driveway. And the way that, if you want a shaved ice snow cone, you just pull straight in that same driveway, but you come into the parking slot. So you're pulling in forward, and where I feel that we've made this much safer for the children is that you don't back up like Walmart, Kroger, and almost every parking lot that there is in town. They back up, and then people walk down the lanes where the traffic comes in between the cars. Well, in this case, I can't make it perfect, but I'm, I've got it to where you don't back up. And backing up is when you have most of your accidents. I'm a driver, and that's what they teach us in driving school at AVF.
You've got, you've got plenty of room on the front and the back of those vehicles to travel to the, the front of your establishment.
Yes, sir. Last year.
And stay out of the lanes of what you perceive to be the lanes of traffic.
Yes. So I just need to explain that about there.
Explanation.
And I'd like to say also, this is my chance to make all the, all these improvements, whereas the bank, in other words, will, you know, loan the money if I can borrow it on something that is more worthwhile or to them financially than shaved ice. I couldn't afford to do all these improvements. And the church, they're real happy about it. I even talked to some of the landscapers that are doing the landscaping on the church. And I know, I know some of them even. And it's going to cost me approximately with buying the ice building and setting it up and getting the, all these improvements, the rock at the bottom, the nice, instead of going straight up the building with a, like, I seen one that was set up that had a straight up, just came straight up the building like that with just some sheet metal, I'm going to go out with awning and have an overhang to give it more appeal. Plus, I'm going to put plants, potted plants, up by the building, and not count all the trees and shrubs that will help match up the Levy Baptist Church. So this is my chance to really make the place really, really look nice.
Yeah, Alderman White, but let me just make, I know that I've, you know, I've had, you know, several grandchildren down there, and the way that it's oriented now, you know, to me is perhaps much more of a danger than I would be concerned about, you know, is if you're not really keep a close eye on your, you know, your kids, they could wander out on Camp Robinson. You know, this, you're saying, is facing in a southerly direction, which, you know, is going to be in front of, it's not, you're not going to have nearly as much of a likelihood for your youngsters to wander out on Camp Robinson as you perhaps do now.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right, and that's one of the reasons I want to do it. And so...
Alderman Ross still has the floor.
One other thing, can you explain about the awning that goes around the snow cone, the blue? That covers the whole thing?
We're going to extend it up above the machine to help cover up like the refrigeration units, the ice-making units that are made out of stainless steel, and we're getting it up to try to cover that, yes.
Covering that. Are those cloth awnings, or are they the canvas awnings?
Well, these, these, I went to Maple Leaf Awnings, they're cloth, and I also was wanting to look into checking with some of them on the ones that make metal awnings, too, and just see what, you know, would look the best and look the best. But I'm definitely putting awnings all the way around and to make it, and with the overhang on, like, on the, on the ice end of this building, it'll be like a four-foot awning hanging over for people to stand under, and that'll give it more shape. And then on the front on the snow cone, and it'll be, it's a wider building, so we're going to do a wider awning and come out on...
Okay, and then one more question. The, the metal awning that you have, or the metal, I don't know what that cover's called right now, and now you said that, would that be removed? The, what is that thing called that, you have the picnic table under?
Oh, yeah, that would be there.
Okay, that's going to all be gone?
Oh, that'd be gone, that'd be gone.
Cleaned up, okay.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alderman White?
What provision do you have for trash?
Well, I have a dumpster at another location, and that way, I just transport home my pickup, you know, trash.
So, so the trash receptacle on the snow cone side and the ice machine side?
Yes.